I'd like to call this meeting of the Zion City Council to order. Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Detteen?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Mayor Hill?
Here. Pastor Shirley Garcia? Come up to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. And we, I want to first give honor to God. And thank God for this great city, Zion. And recognizing the mayor and all the commissioners. And all who are present here. And the chief of police. Chief of fire departments. And all the departments. If I forget someone, please forgive me. Charge it to my, charge it to my head, not my heart. And I, I thank God for Pastor McDowell, the commissioner of Zion. I thank God for the work that he's doing and that all of you are doing. And I just want you to agree with me in prayer. And I'll make this very brief. Father, we just thank you today. We thank you for our mayor and we thank you for the commissioners. We thank you for all the city officials, Lord, in the name of Jesus. We thank you for each and every heart. We thank you for each and everyone that's present here today. God, we thank you for this agenda that you have, that they will bring to order. And I thank you, Father, for that there will be agreement. I thank you for agreement today. I thank you that this meeting will go well. And that this meeting will, the, the, all the things that is on the agenda will be able to move smoothly and expeditiously, God. And I thank you, Father God, for the resources of this city, God, in the name of Jesus. We ask you to bring the resources back to this city. We thank you, Father God, for, for the people in the city to come together and, and work with the city officials and all the council meeting members, God. God, we thank you for each and every heart again here today in this city and all the Zion citizens. We thank you for safety, God, keeping this city safe. And we give you all the praise, God, today. We give you all the honor and we give you all the glory. And let everyone say, amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item number four is agenda changes. Do any of the commissioners have any agenda changes? Is there a motion to approve the agendas presented?
So moved.
The motion. In a second. Discussion. Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Detteen?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number five is special presentation from WCR Enterprises concerning the enterprise zone application. And Mr. Warren Ribbley?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. It's a pleasure to appear before you this evening to give you an update on where we're at with the enterprise zone application. I'll try to be brief but yet as comprehensive and as you would like and answer any questions that you might have. I know there's a lot going on tonight. I know you have a busy agenda. We've been very diligently working on the application for a number of months and we are sort of winding down. The application to the state of Illinois is due at the end of December, December 31st. And obviously, we will meet that deadline. There are a couple of ordinances that will be presented to you in, if not the next meeting, certainly the first meeting of December. One, which is the enabling ordinance to actually establish the enterprise zone. And the second is, is a diversity ordinance, which is a result of additional criteria that I'll talk a little bit more in detail as, as we go through the presentation. I did present a couple of handouts. One is the 11 criteria by which enterprise zone applications are, are judged by the department and then an ultimate decision made by the enterprise zone board. Since I probably last spoke with you, but in consultation with, with the mayor and staff, we thought it would be advantageous to invite the villages of Winthrop Harbor and Beach Park to join in the enterprise zone effort for a couple of reasons. Number one, first and foremost, we believe it strengthens the application overall from a scoring eligibility. Additionally, even though it's sort of an unwritten rule, it's, it's pretty obvious in kind of reviewing the legislation that the enterprise zone act encourages sort of regionalism and bringing together of communities. And, and then there's another very practical reason. If you have three or more communities, you can actually have a little bit larger enterprise zone. So I also presented to you, and I apologize for the quality, a map of, of the proposed zone. You'll see, obviously, it's primarily the majority of the city of Zion. It does pick up parts of Winthrop Harbor going up Sheridan Road and picking up the Marina area. And then at the, sort of the south, I believe it would be southwestern part, picks up a bit of Beach Park along Wadsworth Road and Lewis Avenue. As presented there, the, the zone is approximately nine and a quarter square miles. You can go up to a total of 13 square miles. So again, you want to have that flexibility to be able to add territory to the zone as development projects might come up along the way that weren't anticipated in the original boundaries. And, and again, the, the zone is really designed and drawn that way to maximize sort of the, the point values that are awarded under, under the various criteria. And, you know, if there are areas that you would deem to want to have in the zone at a later time, we certainly could come back and, and add those. So at this point, I think I'd just call your attention to the, the handout that lists the 11 qualifying criteria. And I'm just going to kind of go through those one by one and, and let you know where, where I believe we, we stand. And you'll see in the far right column, the number of points that are awarded for each one of these categories. And those points are actually established in, in statute. So there's not really any subjectivity in terms of the number of points. There clearly is subjectivity and objectivity based upon the, the application as it's presented to the state. You'll also see in per ins in each of the point categories what, what the city's application was awarded in the 16, 2016 application that was presented. So number one is, is just sort of a, an economic condition that looks at the measure of unemployment. And it's probably important to note a distinction. You'll, you'll note in red that there's a notation of the local labor market area. So there's really two things you have to look at. One, you look at the specific boundaries of the enterprise zone. But then you look at a larger area, which defines your labor market area, which is essentially, you know, where are people commuting to work and from where are people coming into the Zion area for work. So some of these criteria, you really examine sort of the conditions within the local labor market. Others are just specific to the enterprise zone boundaries itself. This first one looks at the total labor market. We're defining the labor market as Lake County. And, you know, we need to be able to demonstrate that all or part, and that's a key distinction, part of the local labor market area has unemployment that exceeds 120% of the state average. This zone and this labor market does well in, in that category, which is a good thing for the application, not so much a good thing for the, for the labor market. But we've identified a number of census tracts that actually come up to roughly 166%. So we will score well in, in that category. And as you see, you really scored pretty well in that category two years ago. The second one is job creation and investment. We need to be able to demonstrate that, that the enterprise zone designation will have a very positive impact on economic development and investment and job creation and retention. And, and the, the test sets a pretty high standard. We have to be able to demonstrate the ability to attract $100 million of investment over the life of the zone. The life of the zone is 15 years plus a potential 10-year extension. And the creation or retention of 1,000 full-time jobs. Honestly, that was a criteria in which the 2016 application did not score well and one that we spent a lot of time and the mayor's been very helpful in outreach to, to the business community. And, you know, I'm pleased to report to you that we, we, we will hit that, those minimums. As of right now, tonight, we're at $98 million of investment and over 1,300 retained and created jobs. And we still have some business support letters outstanding. And we actually have to demonstrate that by a letter that the business presents to us and, and signs that's projecting what they anticipate in terms of investment over the next, over the, over the life of the zone, both, both in terms of investment and job creation and retention. So I'm very pleased with, with the outcome on that. And, and we will score significantly better in this category than, than in the previous application. The third is another economic criteria. It looks at poverty rates. It looks at the number of schoolchildren that receive reduced or free lunches and families that receive food stamps. Again, this is looking at the overall labor market area. And, and again, we've identified a number of census tracts that are well in excess of the qualifying rates that you see listed on the handout. So again, this is a category we expect to score significantly better than, than the prior application. The next criterion is a difficult one for this area as it, as it presently stands. But we've got, I think, some, a, a very good ray of hope to score well in this. First of all, you don't have any coal mines up here. So you don't have any abandoned mines. So we get no points for that. There, we're still analyzing the brownfields and that has to meet a specific definition within the, the Environmental Protection Act. I know there have been some in the past, but there's, you know, there's some limitations on, on what can be considered. And then this also looks at federally declared disaster areas within the last three years. And, and in terms of federal disaster areas, there have not been any. However, we have worked hard, very hard in amending the statute that would add a facility at which nuclear waste is, is stored. If that's not equivalent or more so to a brownfield, I don't know what is. And, and clearly, that is the, the situation out at the, the Zion power plant that's being decommissioned. Senator Melinda Bush has been an incredible advocate in, in getting legislation approved. It was approved in the Senate. Again, the mayor was helpful also in, in working with the senator. It was approved late in the spring session. It is now before the, the House of Representatives for a concurrence vote. Met with Senator Bush last Friday. And we are working with the House to get that bill called in the fall veto session, which begins a week from today for three days and then the week after Thanksgiving for three additional days. We're, we're somewhat optimistic that, that will get passed. And if it gets passed in this session, then that would be a criteria, in addition to this criteria in which your application, our application can be judged. And I believe would be enough to get us to the full point values. As you see, again, this was an area where, you know, we could improve over 2016. So we'll keep you up to date on that effort. But again, cautiously optimistic.
Is there a sponsor on that bill yet?
As of right now, it's House Bill 156. And Representative Jessel is the House sponsor. We're also speaking with Representative Yingley, knowing he's not, you know, the specific representative here, but to have bipartisan support. There are a number of cosponsors on, on the bill itself. It's very narrowly written. And, you know, we think that given, given that, in fact, I would almost describe it as almost a, a technical oversight. I don't think anyone really anticipated at the time when this act was passed in 2012 that, you know, you would have, you know, a facility such as the Zion plant where there was actually storage. And I know that Zion has worked long and hard and on a number of different fronts to, to address that issue. And it's, it's a failure of federal policy really to, to address it. But, you know, it, it's, it's an economic reality. And it's something that because of that, you know, you should be able to get credit as any other area that has brownfields that need to be cleaned up or abandoned coal mines where there's environmental problems. So, and I'm not saying there are, but I mean, it, it is an impediment to development. So you should get credit for it. So it's why we pursued the legislation. The fifth criteria deals with layoffs and, and plant closures. We've gone through all the data throughout the entire local labor market and have identified, again, unfortunately, a significant amount of plant closures. I think we've documented over 12, almost 12,000 positions, again, within labor market, meaning more Lake County, not just Zion area, that has resulted, as a result of plant closures documented. So we will score well in, in that category. And, and again, you see there, there was room for improvement there. We're still documenting a few others and I'll be working at them with staff the next couple of days on that.
I just want to, was wondering on that. I know that the closing of the nuclear power plant was too far back. But the ending of the decommissioning process, there have been, I think they've had a couple hundred people, maybe 300 people working down there during the decommissioning process. Did you include those people?
You know, that, that's a good point. We haven't. That would not have shown up in, in the, in the data. But to the extent we can document that, we, we definitely can include that. And actually, Zion Solutions or Energy Solutions has been very helpful and supportive of the application. So that's a good point. We'll, we'll look to-
You'll follow up on it?
Yes, yes. We'll look to get those, those numbers as well. And, and for example, I'm, I don't think Grand Appliance, for example, I don't think shows up in the latest set of data that's provided. And much of this data comes through Northern Illinois University. But we can always supplement it to the extent we can document it. So that's what we're in the process-
Right. I'm sure Grand Appliance would be happy to, to document that. And there's, Dill Brothers is closing up also. I'm not sure how many employees they have.
Okay, okay. I wouldn't wear that. Okay, thank you. The next category is vacancy rates. And that, that's essentially commercial, industrial, can also include retail properties that are available for development. We are, we're still working on that. Scored fairly well on that last time. There's no reason we won't score as well, if not better on that. That's another thing that I'll be, I'm working with your staff on to, to document. Some of the state data is sort of slow in coming. But we've got, you know, we've got good local resources. We can also reach out to local commercial real estate, use MLS and document that. So I'm not concerned about that at all. But it is an area, we still have a little bit additional work to do. Tax base improvement. Once we have the aggregate of the business support letters that document investment and, and job retention and creation, we then work with a firm that does econometric modeling that determines what kind of the indirect benefits of that type of investment are on your, on your tax revenues. And that's largely where that, that criteria is documented. Again, I think we have, definitely will have room for improvement. That kind of relates back to, to number two. So that, you know, that, that is another one that's sort of a work in progress. Infrastructure plans, we definitely will score much better on, on this one. I'm, I'm meeting with your, your engineer in the morning. We've been combing through all of the, the, your, your community development plans, the IDOT five, 10-year road plans. Because again, this is a, an area that we can look at the, the total labor market to document not only the presence of, of existing infrastructure, but also planned infrastructure over the, over the next few years. I, you know, want to find out in, in more detail to what extent the city has an, an infrastructure plan in place looking forward. But I'll be collecting that information tomorrow. Again, we're, we're fairly confident we'll do well. Certainly much better than, than, than in the, in the prior application. Nine, really, it, it really references workforce skills and to the extent that there are works, workforce skill programs available at the high school level to prepare students for jobs that are, that are in the future. And we're literally at, at 100% on there. So as, as you look at, at the, where you were at two years ago versus where you're at now, we've been able to document that all of the schools in the local labor market have those type of programs in place. So I, I think we'll probably hit the maximum amount of, of points on that one. The changes in equalized assessed valuation, that, that's just, there's really nothing subjective about that. That's data that we get from the Illinois Department of Revenue. We've got that data. We scored well there last time out. And, you know, we, we believe that there's no reason, based on what we see, that, that'll be any different than in this year's application. So we should do well there. The final one is the, this is a new criteria that was, criterion that was passed as a result of legislation that was enacted, signed by the governor this spring. It, it essentially asks that the communities that are participating in the enterprise zone make a, a best, best efforts plan to encourage the attraction of businesses that are owned by minorities, females, or individuals with disabilities. And then for projects that take place within the enterprise zone that utilize businesses like, you know, if they're doing rehabilitation or construction, utilize businesses that are owned by minorities, females, or persons within, with disabilities. And the guidance that, that we have gotten is that that should best be demonstrated through passage of an ordinance. I have presented not only this ordinance, but also the enabling ordinance to staff. And hopefully, it's gotten to you, the city attorney, to, to take a look at. But, you know, it, it's, it's not a mandate. It, again, it's just utilizing best efforts to, to achieve utilization of, of those businesses. So I really believe we'll maximize the, the score on, on that as well. So, you know, all in all, I, I feel very good about where we're at. You never know in this process. It is a competitive process. You know, we've heard ranges of how many zones will be awarded. Awards will take place in September of 2019. The evaluation period ends June 30th of 2019. So we'll have feedback at that point. Then those evaluations that are done by the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity are presented to the enterprise zone board. And the enterprise zone board makes final awards. They're, they don't have to make any. And they can make as many as they can, or many as, as long as they don't exceed the statutory maximum. So it's always sort of a moving target because you have some zones that are expiring at different times. But we've heard that a range of six to 12 zones that could be awarded next year. And again, we don't know how many applicants there will be because there can be communities such as your own that have not had a zone before that apply for one. And, and there may be others whose zone is expiring that, that choose not to reapply. But again, sort of our, our best guess is that there probably could be 18 to 20, 15 to 20 applications and six to 12 awards. So it, it is a competitive process. But we will, we will follow through the process all the way along. You know, I mentioned the enterprise zone board. Let me just expand on that a little bit. That is a five-member board that is, consists of the directors of the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity and the director of the Department of Revenue. And then three members that are appointed by the governor. They are staggered terms. However, there is one term that expires in March of 2019. And there is one vacancy. So, you know, depending upon the outcome of tonight's election, or, well, yeah, depending on the outcome of the election, there could be potentially four new members. Four of the five could be new members, right? Because if there's an administration change, there's likely to be, there will be changes in the directors of the two positions. And there's one that will expire and then there's one vacancy. So again, we will be working, you know, diligently as we can, you know, to, to educate new members that are appointed to the zone, or the enterprise zone board. And, and we'll be working with the department throughout the evaluation period. I mean, we can't submit any new information after December 31st. But our, our, our goal and our plan is to actually submit the application in, in mid-December. And that will give an opportunity for a quick cursory review by staff just to make sure we're not missing anything. Don't think we will, although the application changes every year. And it has changed. But, so, you know, I just want to assure you that we're on top of this. We're doing the best, best that we can. I think we're doing a, a good job. We've had terrific cooperation from the local community, the local business community. local business community, and, you know, I, I feel good about where we stand right now. So, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions?
I think you covered a lot of.
Did.
Yeah, very good presentation.
You'll be expecting us to formally adopt this and say, put it in at the December 1st?
I think that's, I think that's, yeah, no later than then. So, you know, the, the ordinance is in place. The ordinance is, it's almost, I hate to say boilerplate, but it's essentially defined, the language is essentially defined by state statute. The diversity ordinance is, is a little, is new, but, you know, we've spent a lot of time in drafting that as well. It will also, the ordinance also incorporates an intergovernmental agreement, which is required when you have multiple units of government. So, you know, I'll be going to Winthrop Harbor and Beach Park as well. I think, I think your council meetings coincide with Winthrop Harbors, and Beach Park is on the Thursday, the first Thursday. So I really, yes, I think in direct answer to your question, I would anticipate seeking adoption of those ordinances in that, that first week of December through all three communities. What we're really working on right now, and this was a change in the application, is doing the legal description for that, that map that I presented to you. They, the department required some tweaks in the way that that legal description is, is written, so, but that has to be part of the ordinance, so I need to finalize that as well. So it could potentially be at your November 20th meeting, but, but I think given the calendar overall, it's probably most prudent just to wait till the first.
Okay, we would do all three ordinances and that.
Yes, yeah, yeah, there's, yeah, the IGA is incorporated in the enabling ordinance, so it's just two ordinances. There's that one and the, and the diversity ordinance, but it has to be done by all three communities.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Item number six is citizens' comments.
Mayor Hill, honorable sirs, gentle ladies. First, sir, I welcome the mayor back, and I wish him a speedy and complete recovery from his surgery.
Thank you.
Second, if the commissioners will remember, last month at the Zion Township Board meeting, I called your attention to the 243rd birthday of the United States Marine Corps, coming up this Saturday, the 10th of November. I requested that the township send appropriate birthday greetings and felicitations to the Commandant of the Marine Corps. I respectfully request that the city also send birthday greetings and felicitations to the Commandant of the Marine Corps, Headquarters Marine Corps, 8th and I Streets, Southeast, Washington, DC, the birthday being this Saturday, the 10th. I do thank you for your time, your courtesy, and your attention to this matter. Permission to stand down, sir.
Yes, sir. And we will be sure and get that there. Item number seven is a consent agenda. Will the clerk please read the consent agenda?
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on October 16th, 2018 at 7:00 PM, and approval but not release of closed session minutes of a meeting held on October 16th, 2018 at 7:47 PM. Bills vouchers 130612 through 130717 drawn on Huntington National Bank, total 702,000, $712,966.19.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Datin?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number eight is consider passing resolution as follows. 8A is creating Animal Control Commission for Commissioner McDowell.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a statement that I'd like to read for the council, just to give a little background on why we would like to seek the creation of an animal control commission. So on July 17th, 2018, the city council was made aware that a group of animal health advocates were concerned of how the city was addressing, processing, handling, and temporarily holding dogs and cats in the city. While we already understood some of the challenges and limitations we faced at Zion Animal Control prior to the July 17th meeting, we were very thankful to the group of advocates for bringing some additional issues and concerns to the forefront. Because of their willingness to help the city, many improvements have been made over the last three months, and I'd like to highlight just a few of them. We've successfully planned and executed a cleanup day where over 80 volunteers helped clean the animal control facility and grounds on August 11. The Zion Illinois Lost and Found Pets Facebook page was created and moderated by Chris Shemansky and Madeline Santana, along with the cooperation of Randy Noor, our animal control officer. The page profiles dogs and cats found or picked up by the animal control, and also informs residents when pets have been reunited with their owners or released to the Lake County Animal Control or to Orphans of the Storm. It's a great service to the community and very much appreciated. The service and the posting of lost dogs and cats will continue. We've held three meetings on July 25th, August 16th, and September 12th with the animal advocates to further vet our potential issues and brainstorm ideas for improvement. A fundraiser was held on September 11th and organized by a group called Cause for Cause to benefit Zion Animal Control. We haven't been given any details on the funds that were raised at that event yet. We've had three additional meetings with a group of qualified citizens, Chief of Police Steve Dumian, and animal experts to discuss realistic solutions to some of our biggest issues. Tonight, in addition to this resolution, we're also submitting for approval to the city council a contract that will move quite a few of our animal control services to the Lake County Animal Control. This is going to address many of the concerns and issues we faced previously. Lake County is an updated facility with veterinarian resources and other resources that Zion just doesn't have bandwidth for at this time. We will continue to use our community service officers to pick up animals running at large in the city and enforce our animal control ordinances. If animals can't be immediately returned to their owners, they will be picked up by Lake County Animal Control if that contract is approved. While contracting with Lake County does not, does solve a lot of our immediate issues, we want to continue to build on what we've accomplished thus far. So tonight, we're going to be proposing that the city create an animal control commission for the city. Chief Dumian and I think that the formation of an animal control commission will be of great benefit to the city. The proposed membership of the commission is made up of knowledgeable and concerned citizens who have the best interest of our residents and the animals that live in this city in mind. The main responsibilities of our animal control commission are outlined in the bylaws and are part of the resolution, and they are as follows. Review Chapter 6 of the Zion Municipal Code related to animals in the city limits of Zion, and suggest revisions or changes to the code as needed to the city council. To develop and implement a plan, along with the city of Zion's police department, to address the impoundment and redemption of dogs and cats, and to make improvements to update protocols and procedures. Also meet regularly when necessary, as determined by the commission, to address the needs of the city and of Zion citizens, and it, as it relates to animal welfare issues and educational opportunities. The proposed commission membership have spent a great deal of time thinking about the welfare of our residents and animals, and are already helping to make some significant decisions for improving our animal control services, and those members who have been meeting are as follows. Chris Shemansky, Madeline Santana, Noel Harris, and Lisa Whitehead. I want to thank those who have had a part in guiding our efforts and putting this commission together for the betterment of all of our residents, human, canine, and feline. I would be remiss not to thank those who initially brought their concerns to the city council and really got the ball rolling and making these improvements to our animal control services. So thanks to Carrie Clark, Sue Davis, and Charlie Burleson. I also want to recognize the expert advice and counsel that we have received in our meetings from Sandy Wisniewski, Wisniewski? Correct? Okay, Wisniewski, who is the founder and executive dress, director and licensed humane investigator from Animal Education and Rescue, and also Cindy Williams, who is also a licensed humane investigator and volunteer from Animal Education and Resources. And with that, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution to create an animal control commission in the city of Zion.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Having done, clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Datin?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. And I would like to read the resolution. Commissioner McDowell covered a lot of it, but I would like to read the official resolution that we just adopted. Be resolved by the city council of the city of Zion, Lake County, Illinois, as follows. There is hereby created a Zion City Commission hereafter known, hereafter known as the Animal Control Commission, whose purpose is to advise the city council on matters related to animal control services in the city of Zion. The commission will review the Zion Municipal Code related to animals in the city, city limits of Zion, and suggest revisions or changes to the code as needed. Develop and implement a plan, along with the city of Zion's police department, to address the impoundment and redemption of animals and cats. And the commission will determine, excuse me, have dogs and cats. The commission will determine a procedure for unclaimed animals in the custody of Zion's animal control. The animal control commission shall be governed by its policies, which will establish the procedures, rules, and regulations to provide framework for the operation and management of the commission, officers, and voting, meetings, and its vision for the future. Members shall be appointed by the mayor and approved by the city council, dated the 6th day of November 2018. Thank you. Thank you all for working very hard on putting this all together. Item number nine is consider passing ordinance as follows. 9A is in Zion Municipal Code, Section 14, dash, 112, parentheses, A, parentheses, dash, and limitations on solicitation, and 62, dash, 336A, hours permit to use city property for Chief Dumian.
Mayor and commissioners, good evening. On behalf of Chief Steve Dumian, we respectfully request the council approve the proposed changes. Currently, solicitation is prohibited before 10:00 AM and after 7:00 PM on Monday through Friday, before 10:00 AM and after 5:00 PM on Saturday, and prohibited entirely on Sundays or any national or state holiday. We're proposing changes only to the weekday hours that be prohibited before 10:00 AM and after 5:00 PM. We received a number of complaints regarding people knocking on the doors, especially in the dark so early, and we received complaints throughout the year about solicitation being allowed so late in the weekday evening.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve these changes to the municipal code.
Is there a second?
Okay.
We have a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Datin?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 10 is discussion authorization approval. 10A is consider approval of payment to Campanella &amp; Sons for emergency sanitary manhole repair and storm sewer repair for Director Roberts.
Thank you, honorable mayor and commissioners. The tax will find the final invoices for emergency sanitary manhole repair at 2800 Block of Bethel, and the emergency storm sewer replacement at 20th Street. 18th of September, residents of the 2800 Block of Bethel reported that they were experiencing backups. We found two manholes, sanitary manholes that required replacement. On the 24th of September, we were called for sinkholes that were reported near 3106 20th Street. The storm sewer was collapsing in several areas. Replacement of a 36-inch storm sewer was required. Due to the size and depth of these excavations, an outside contractor was needed to make the necessary repairs. Staff is requesting payment for two invoices from Campanella &amp; Sons of Wadsworth, Illinois, in the amount of $26,175.94 for sanitary manholes at 2800 Block of Bethel, and also $24,251.74 for the 20th Street storm sewer.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve payment on these final invoices.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Datin?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number 10C is consider approval of service agreement between the Lake County Health Department and the city of Zion for animal care and control program. Whoops, excuse me. 10B, consider renewal of workers' compensation, crime, equipment breakdown, and law enforcement liability insurance for 2018, 2019, per Administrator Name.
Thank you, mayor and commissioners. Current policies for our workers' compensation, crime, equipment breakdown, and our law enforcement liability insurance are set to expire in December. We had Assurance Agency, our brokers, go out to market, and if you look at Page 5 of your packets, which shows the premium summary, you could see what the recommendation and the ultimate results of that were. From the quotes, we're trying to get everything moved over to a fiscal year basis. It's just easier for accounting and management to be able to do that. So rather than December, IPRF, you can see the current premium that's expiring, the renewal premium, and then there's a third column there that basically they agreed to bridge December to May, to May 1st, to get, so that we can get everything on a fiscal year basis. So based on that, they're recommending that we do workers' comp and our equipment to, at the $249,264 and $530 to extend to May 1st, to get us through May 1st, at which point they'll renew on a fiscal year basis. The crime and the law enforcement liability, it didn't make sense to try and do a bridge premium with them, so we're just recommending that we renew for December to December next year at $2,230 for crime and $112,100 for our law enforcement liability. You can see our workers' compensation is actually trending downwards. The premium went down about $12,000 compared to last year, and our law enforcement liability, while up slightly, stayed relatively flat. So I would recommend approval of renewals as presented with IPRF for workers' comp, extending to May 1st, Hanover on the crime policy for December to November, XL Caitlin for equipment breakdown for now to May 1st, and then Kin Sale for law enforcement liability for December through November.
And then we'll, we'll redo these same contracts, May 1?
We'll redo workers' comp and the equipment breakdown for May 1. The crime and the law enforcement liability is going to cover us for 12 months.
Is there a motion?
Make that motion.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Datin?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 10C is consider approval of service agreement between the Lake County Health Department and the city of Zion for animal care and control program.
This was the contract that I referenced in the statement. It's something that Chief Dumian and Deputy Chief Henderson have been working on. You have the contract before you, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve this contract.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion? If I understand this, the only charges are the special charges on the back?
Actually, those are, those special charges on the back are for municipalities that don't have contracts. So our contract states that there will be no fees for, for dogs or other animals. There are, is a fee for cats. Yeah, that was our response, too. Really? Just cats?
Was there a reason for that?
Is there a reason?
Mayor, I don't know why. Just thought that cats are terrified.
Mayor, I don't know why necessarily cats are $35. We are going to be able to, with our existing CSOs and our current Animal Control Officer, provide the services we do now without cost, and we're going to obtain a whole lot of services for both us and the citizens without additional cost. And overall, it's going to help us reduce the line item for these services we provide.
So, so what is the difference, what will be different between what we do now and doing with Lake County? We will still keep animals for three days?
They'll be immediately transferred to Lake County.
Immediately?
Yeah.
So, who transfers them?
Lake County will come, pick up the animals here in Zion.
This is too good to be true.
It really is good.
And where will people pick them up, pick up their animals?
Well, right now, our holding facility down on Damascus, but there is talk, I don't know how far it's gotten, Deputy Chief Henderson, of actually moving the, the holding panels to the police station.
Right, there's no immediate plans for that. We'll give it to kind of look at that feasibility. What our intent to do is to reunite pets with owners during the workday as they recover. But Lake County Animal Control will come out 365 days a year between 9:00 AM and 4:00 PM.
Okay, that wasn't my, that's not what I meant from my question. I mean, where will they have to go?
They will go to the facility in Libertyville.
It's in Libertyville?
Yes. If they can't be reunited within a couple of hours of us getting them. The pet owners have their dogs tagged, vaccinated with their rabies tag, that should make contact with the owner's screen.
And there was some discussion about chipping. Will Lake County do that?
They will.
They will.
And that's going to be a real benefit to us, because if the dog goes to Lake County and it's shipped, returned to the owner, comes back to us, we'll be able to read that chip and reunite the dog with its owner right away.
And how long does Lake County hold the animals?
I think they, it's what state statute is, which is between five to seven days.
Thank you. We, do we have a motion? We do have a motion.
And a second.
And a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dattin?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 10D is consider appointment to Animal Control Commission per Mayor Hill. And the, I am asking the City Council to approve the appointment of Mr. Chris Shemansky, Madeline Santana, Noel Harris, and Lisa Wykel to the Animal Control Commission. And the liaisons will be Commissioner McDowell and Police Chief Dumian.
Make that motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dattin?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Mayor, could we have a picture with our, we have the commission members here, and could we have a picture with them?
Yes. Would you guys come forward? Get a? No, I'm not, I'm not getting up. I'll just hide or something.
Understand, we'll leave a little space so that we can see the mayor.
On all of this side?
No.
We got three thorns and three roses here.
One more, please, my office chair, and the last one right there, perfect.
Thank you.
Item 10E is consider approval of Animal Control Commission bylaws per Commissioner McDowell.
All right, so you, you have a copy of the bylaws in front of you, and the resolution really contained the responsibilities of, of the commission, and I also read the responsibilities of the commission to the council in my statement. The sharp eye of Attorney Randall has, has pointed out to me a few things that we ought to probably change in, in the policies and effective date, which is on page two. So, if you go down to point number three, and 1, 2, 3, line four, it says, "If voted in by the majority, changes, amendments will be submitted to the City Council for approval." And that should probably read consideration. We're not presupposing that the council would approve it, it's for the council's consideration.
That's a lawyer.
This is a, you know, the sharp eye of a lawyer is catching these things, you know? So, we have a, a good document here. And then the rest of that sentence, "If the amendment change does not receive a majority vote, the amendment will, change will be denied." She thought that was a better word than rejected. And then in point number four, "All changes to these policies will be reviewed and voted on by the commission," and then we don't want to presuppose that it's going to be approved but considered by the City Council and if denied by the City Council. So, with those minor changes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve these bylaws.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and I would just like to go on record as when I said, "That's a lawyer," that was a compliment. We have a motion and a second, is there further discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dattin?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 10F is discussion regarding January 1, 2019 meeting per Mayor Hill. The regular City Council meeting, the first Tuesday, is January 1st, and I'm assuming that no one will be truly interested in meeting on January 1st, and the question is, I've thought about what's, what's going to happen between the last meeting in December and January 1st, and I would anticipate that very little will be getting done about new items that the City Council needs to consider. So, we could have a January 2nd or January 3rd, but I'm going to suggest that we just cancel the January 1st meeting and take up business on January 15th.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dattin?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number 11 is departmental commentary. Department heads have anything to share? Thank you. Okay, item number 12 is announcements, and I would like to announce and invite all the people that are here today at our City Council meeting. Many of you participate on a regular basis at these meetings, and you're very active in the community and are important to our city in doing business. And on November 14th, the Muslim Amadea Community is hosting, is hosting an appreciation lunch for the city and township employees and volunteers at the, at Grace Missionary Church at 12 noon, and they have invited all the people that are on the Zion Community Forum page on Facebook, so I want, I would like to extend an invitation to all of you that are on Zion commissions and that show up at Zion City Council meetings or are any part of the, of the city government to attend that. And it's, I believe it's, it's going to be a Taco Tuesday celebration, and they have a short presentation that, that they will make. And they're doing it because they appreciate the cooperation and the, the work that they have received from city employees throughout the year. So, you are all invited. And that's November 14th, which is Wednesday, at 12 noon at Grace Missionary Church. November 20th at 6:15, there's a Zion Township Board Meeting. Also on the 20th, at 7:00 PM, there's a Zion City Council Meeting. November 22nd, 23rd, the city offices will be closed for Thanksgiving holiday. And December 4th at 7:00 PM, there's a Zion City Council Meeting. Item 13 on the agenda is a closed session pursuant to 5 ILCS 120/2, open meetings for the discussion of personnel and collective bargaining. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Is there a motion?
Second.
And a second? Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dattin?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Just for, for public com, or information, we will be coming back into session, and there are 1, 2, 3, 4 items, all involving collective bargaining with the city that we will be taking action on. Thank you.